Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the July 7th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission of Maricopa County. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Time is 9:30 on the dot. If we could have roll call, please.
Chairman Lindblom.
Here.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Dan Zeison. Chairman, we have a form.
Okay, thank you. Now for the chairman's announcements, this this meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law, ARS 38431. Gens are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing in www.mericopac.gov/planing. Staff report, reports prepared for each gen item should become a part of permanent record for each case with respect to the hearing process cases will be considered in order. They appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case will saw a speaker's card, were in person attendance, or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of the persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. Chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. With that, moving on to the minutes, are there any concerns or comments regarding the June 16th, 22 minutes? Hearing none. The minutes will be approved. Item number one on the continuance gen item Z 2021-133, Valvista 1. Staff, have any announcements?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we have no announcements. This is a zone change to C2CUPD District 1. They have asked to continue to August 4th, so no actions necessary by the commission.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I need to correct. I do have an announcement, July 21st.
July 21st, yes. All right, so case number one will be continued to July 21st, 2022. Moving on to the consented gen item number two, Z 2021-160, Agave Solar.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Z 2021-160, Agave Solar in Districts 4 and 5 is an industrial 2IUPD zone change with a plan of development for a proposed PB solar power generation facility that will generate 195 megawatts of power on a 1,423 acre site a half mile south of Elliott and 363rd Avenue. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 22 is for approval, subject conditions A through J.
Are there any questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none. Is there anybody on webinar that's raising their hand, David?
Chairman, there are no raised hands. No one has indicated a desire to speak.
I couldn't hear what you said.
So there's no raise.
Okay, all right, no raised hands.
Any calls to give.
Oh, thank you for the compliment. I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve item number two on the consented gen.
Move to approve. Chairman Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Couldn't hear who.
Lawrence made the motion, Swart seconded.
Commissioner Lawrence made a motion to approve. And Commissioner who?
Swart.
Swart, seconding the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm back two years ago. Sorry, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approve.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom.
Yes.
Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of six to zero.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to the regular gen item, item number three, case number Z 2022-051, Digital Billboard at 705 North Mary Street. Staff like to present, please.
Yes. Good morning, members of the commission.
Morning.
This is case Z 2020-051, 705 North Mary Street, Digital Billboard. This is a special use permit request to allow a legally non-conforming illuminated static billboard oriented toward the local street to be converted to a digital billboard oriented toward the adjacent freeway in the IND 2 zoning district. The site is located on the northeast corner of Mary Street and Gilbert Drive, about 750 feet east of the Red Mountain Loop 202 freeway and Scottsdale Rural Road interchange. Currently, the illuminated billboard is 30 feet tall with a sign area of 300 square feet per sign face, which meets the development standards for non-freeway orientated billboards and was approved as a billboard oriented toward the adjacent local streets and not freeway. The proposal is to increase the height of the billboard to 62 feet and change the sign area to 672 square feet per sign area. The subject billboard is considered legally non-conforming since it was permitted on the site prior to the county's 2021 text amendment regarding billboard regulations and that there are two other freeway billboard signs less than 1,000 feet from the subject billboard. The quest is to make this legally non-conforming billboard a digital billboard oriented toward the adjacent freeway, and as such, will require a special use permit per chapter 14 of the zoning ordinance. The current billboard was approved based on a 2013 zoning interpretation that a billboard can be placed less than the required 1,000 feet from another billboard if the two billboards are orientated toward different streets. Thus, another reason why this billboard is considered legally non-conforming. However, the existing billboard would never have been originally permitted but for the fact that it was not orientated toward freeway. The proposed special use permit will increase the height of the sign area of this billboard for the sole purpose orientated it toward the freeway and not toward Mary Street or Gilbert Drive, as was permitted. Staff is concerned that approval of this special use permit may result in three digital billboards, which will be within 1,000 feet in length of a Red Mountain freeway. So, and there are some arguments for the bill, however, there are some arguments for the billboard to be approved. The existing billboard is illuminated. A digital face will result in less luminescence into the nighttime sky and less potential light to trespass onto adjacent neighborhoods than does conventional sign that's illuminated. Arguably, the digital space is more aesthetic than a conventionally illuminated billboard. Additionally, during the applicant's citizen participation process, staff nor the applicant received any opposition from neighbors, area interested parties, nor the city of Tempe concerning this request. The billboard modification will increase the height from 30 feet to 62 feet and increase the site face area from 300 square feet to 672 square feet, as well as modifying the illumination from top-mounted downward lighting to a digital face. It's important to note that there has been no comment from the city of Tempe regarding this request, who have the ultimate annexing municipality ability. There is no known public opposition despite an active community group in this area. It is staff's opinion that redevelopment within the North Tempe County Island works to mitigate the potential for neighborhood light. It is also staff's opinion that a digital face is generally more aesthetic than a traditional illumination. The current traditionally illuminated billboard is legally non-conforming use that is permanently entitled. Staff's negative recommendation in this staff report that was presented was based on concern that legally non-conforming uses should amortize over time. However, the only means to improve the existing billboard aesthetic is via a special use permit, as now that's being proposed. Therefore, in further consideration of the facts of this case, staff recommends approval of special use permit, Z 2022-051, subject to conditions A through H, with a delineation of the condition C, which would limit the timeframe for this billboard to five years. So staff was recommending to that, to the commission, that removal of condition C would be warranted in this case. So this concludes staff presentation of the case. Thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you very much. I did have one question. You mentioned there's no opposition to this case, right?
That is correct.
Anybody else from the commission have questions of staff?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Arnett.
Could you speak a little further to the, why the timing? What's the concern with staff on the five versus the other? Just what's the?
Originally, we had recommended denial of the billboard case, denial of the special use permit, and we thought if this did, we, staff were kind of in the opinion that we should limit the time limit for five years on the special use permit, just to see if we get any opposition within that five years and have the applicant reapply again. Under further review of things and looking at kind of the aesthetic value of the billboard, also looking at the fact that digital billboards are going to be less, less light pollution and then be more dark sky compliant versus an illuminated billboard, we're considering that this should be approved and then we should remove that time limit on the billboard, on the SGP.
We're more cautious.
Right, exactly, precisely.
Just looking up to it from the app. Okay, I see the applicants here.
To that point, I'm going to ask a follow-up question. So you're, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So staff is recommending or reconsidering the denial with the approval, including removing the five-year limit?
That is correct. Precisely. That's basically what we want to do. Instead of denying the special use permit, staff want to, actually are now approve, are recommending approval of this, of the special use permit. And before, we had a time limit that was going to be on the special use permit of five years. We're recommending that that is removed so that now, once the special use permit is approved, there is no time limit on it.
So to that point, in perpetuity?
Correct.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the commission, questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman Lindblom.
Oh, Chairman Lindblom?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners Slasher, Vice Chair Slasher. Yeah, to that point, I just wanted to say, I actually was happy to see those changes that staff made. I felt like they were the right, the right move. And I was, I was a little confused by the denial first, and when I got that change, I was actually pretty pleased about it. So just wanted, I do feel this is a better, less intrusive proposal. As a neighbor, I would really like it, but I think I probably should just wait and comment more in a minute.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, I see the applicants here. Can you please state your name and address for record?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chairman Members of the Commission, Gary Hayes, 2198 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. First of all, as always, I'd like to thank staff and their willingness to work with us to try and get to where we are today, which is, I agree with everything that has been presented by staff, and I think I can give a little color and help as to why the change of time specifically has come about. So as we have been going through with these billboard cases based on the ordinance that was approved the end of last year, one of the things that we have decided to do, and I don't think we shared this with staff until much later, is even when we're not required to hold a neighborhood meeting, we are. So we held a neighborhood meeting for this one, and the only person that showed up was somebody who owns a billboard that says, what are you guys doing? We explained to them. They said, great, no issues. So one of the things that is important for the commission to know is, we are going above and beyond to make sure we engage the neighborhood. We are holding neighborhood meetings when they're not needed. We've, I think I'm up to my 12th or 14th neighborhood meeting on some of these cases, and nobody has any concerns. We've thus far had two people show up, not on this case, but in all of them. And the other guy was concerned about some project that was next door that had nothing to do with us. Once we explained that to him, he's like, okay, I'm good. I don't have any questions about this one. So I think that's why you see staff changing their recommendation. Additionally, and this is on a staff that asked for some more information from the Luber technology, about the Luber technology from the company. Because of vacation schedules and everything else, we weren't able to get that to them until yesterday morning. So that's also is what included in that memo that you see in front of today, is the Luber technology. And then we're able to help them explain to them that, as you see in your packet, it doesn't talk about a neighborhood. We have, we let them know that, we explained what happened. So I think that's why you're seeing the change. And again, as always, I appreciate working with Mr. Gerard and his staff, and I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody from the commission have questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McGee.
Hi, nice to meet you in person, Commissioner McGee.
Well, we've met over the years.
I know, but I don't think since I've been a commissioner.
No, when you were down the street.
Yes. So first of all, thank you for going above and beyond on the public participation. I know that your industry has been the focus of a lot of perception and misperception. And I respect, I respect that your response to that has been so positive. What I'm trying to figure out is the perception of the timing after, you know, with staff changing from denial to approval, long weekend, people are just rolling back in town from 4th of July. Do you anticipate that would create an unneeded burden of additional negative perception?
Through the Vice Chairman Commissioner, Grof and McGee, no, because long before there was a recommendation of denial or approval, we communicated with the neighborhood. We held neighborhood meetings and nobody showed up. So it's not as if, when we had these things, that staff was saying they were denying. That denial came last week from a public standpoint. So it wasn't, this isn't anything that like people like, oh, it's going to be denial, so we're not going to go down. Nobody had any interest when we went through that process. And I want you guys to really understand that every single time you will see me stand at this podium, we have gone above and beyond what is required. Because I hadn't been involved in the billboards before this year. I wasn't really involved in text amendment. And so one of the things that we need to do is figure out a way to make sure we engage the community, and that's what we're doing.
And just to clarify and confirm my understanding that raising the height of the billboard, you're also going to be turning it away to redirect it towards the freeway and away from the residential streets?
And through the vice chairman, I think it is also, it's basically, it's already that way. It just is shifting a little bit, but also there's a great change. And so what we have to do is go through and show staff of, hey, here's what it looks like from gray. We want to make sure that people can see it. They're not straining to look for it because if it's at a certain angle. So this is done for various reasons, but at the end of the day, I think the important part is, it's better than what is currently there today. What we're proposing is better than what's there today. I think that's why you see the staff recommendation change, based on the information we are giving them from the Luber companies that talk about like what, what the impact is from light and other things.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, to answer Commissioner McGee's question, also, the orientation, as you see on the overhead, is towards Gilbert Drive, which is parallel to the freeway. They're going to raise the height from 30 feet to 62 feet, so that it is clearly oriented towards the freeway.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McGee. Anybody else from the commission have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, Vice Chair Slasher, this is Commissioner, Chairman Lindblom.
Chairman Lindblom, go ahead.
Yeah, my, my question, when you say it is, this to the applicant, Mr. Hayes, when he'd say it's better, it's, if you had to define better, it's aesthetics look better and lighting is not as intrusive, is what I'm kind of gathering. Can you just confirm that?
Through the vice chairman, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct. It is aesthetics, but it's also light pollution. Because, and I have a great example for you, and it's not mine, but I'm going to steal it. If you go into your office, you turn on the light switch, everything in your office is lit up. If you go into your office and it's dark and you turn on your computer, only what's directly in front of your computer monitor is what's lit up. On the backside of it, it's pitch black still. So that's the difference between static versus digital. So you have, it's very concentrated, but it's also with the Luber technology, it's, it's been mitigated. So you will have significantly less light pollution. And that's the material that we gave staff yesterday that was from the Luber company to show exactly what the difference is. So I think the best example is a light switch versus a computer monitor, what that does from light pollution.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding as well. And we, we had a lot of zipper meetings and then cases, you know, with the amendment on our billboards in the past. And the lighting, that was one of the things that I really liked about the digital side is, it's, it's really reduces that light pollution that is around those, those signs. I mean, even at my own personal home, the streetlights blare into our home and, and, you know, so I, I always think about that and those impacts. And that's one of the reasons why I'm really supportive of this, is I just think it's a better, yeah, it's a little taller, but it's on the freeway. And personally, if I was below it or around it, taller is not really a bad thing. It actually puts it out of my line of sight in a lot of ways. So I liked it for that reason as well, too. So thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else from the commission, questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you very much. Anybody from the public that's filled out any sticker cards, or anybody on webinar raising their hands, wish to speak?
Vice Chair, we have no one from the webinar that has raised their hand to speak.
Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Is there any other questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none, I'll close the public forum. And is there any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve. This is Commissioner Lawrence.
Do I have a motion?
Chairman Lindblom, I'll second it. It's in my district. I'll second that.
I didn't hear you that one. Commissioner?
I will second that. Yeah.
Chairman Lindblom, second the motion. We have a roll call vote, please.
May I clarify the motion that it is not for the written report, but eliminates the five-year, is special use permit as recommended in the meeting by staff?
Was that your motion, Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
That was a great clarifier, and I second that as well.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Approve.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the last regular agenda item, item number four, case Z 2022-054. Staff would like to present a case.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Case Z 2022-054 is for the Creamline West Digital Billboard in Supervisor District 1, generally located approximately 2,700 feet east of the southeast corner of Wallace Road and Arizona Avenue in the Chandler area. The site is approximately 20.49 acres. The special use permit for digital conversion of a legal non-conforming illuminated static billboard in the IND 2 zoning district. The applicant seeking the digital conversion of the existing illegal non-conforming billboard to digital. The special use permit is required as per MCZ 01403 that 3 that 1 that A that 1 that B due to the fact that there is another billboard 492 feet to the east. The billboard to the east was recently granted Board Supervisor approval for a similar request. Staff has received no support nor opposition for this proposal from either the public nor the city of Chandler. The subject billboard was originally entitled as a static illuminated billboard oriented towards Wallace Road rather than the freeway. This is because at the time there was a 1,000-foot linear separation requirement, and there was already a freeway-oriented billboard to the east. This was largely the basis of staff's original recommendation of denial in the staff report. It should be noted, however, that the existing billboard meets all other requirements for digital conversion, and the proposed height increase to 63 feet is compliant with the requirement that freeway billboards may be up to 48 feet above adjacent freeway grade. Illumination via a digital face may also be an improvement from the current bottom-up illumination. This was solidified by some photometric diagrams submitted by the applicant after publication of the staff report, which was included in a handout. Additionally, staff has received no comment from the public nor the city of Chandler on this matter. As such, staff has reconsidered a recommendation of a motion of approval, subject to conditions A through H, but with the deletion of condition C, which would place a 10-year limit on the special use permit. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have the same question as the last, and you already mentioned, but just to confirm, there's no opposition in this case, correct, from the public or from the municipal?
You are correct. We have received no opposition from public nor the city of Chandler.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none, will the applicant speak? Are these basically the same facts as the last case?
Mr. Vice Chairman Gary Hayes, 2198 East Camelback in Phoenix, you're exactly right, exactly the same facts. We had a neighborhood meeting, no one attended. This is an uplit billboard, so you're having lights go up into the sky, which causes even more light pollution. And that's why, again, our apologies, but we had to wait for the, the technology, the gurus of technology to figure out exactly what the difference was, and then we gave that to staff yesterday morning. And so this is making it better from a light pollution as well as aesthetics, to make sure I answer the chairman's question before he asked it. Going from an uplit billboard to a digital billboard is significantly better for the community. It's actually, this billboard is near my house, so I drive by it all, all the time, and I think it would be much better for our community.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman Lindblom, I have one.
Chairman Lindblom?
Basically, because Mr. Hayes just called me out, I thought I had a new question. No, I'm joking about that. But the, the, one of the things that I just wanted to point out is there is, some of the part of the denial had to do with distance between one billboard to another and the conversion. And as I read through this and I thought about it, and this may come up in the future, and that's why I mainly mention it. But to me, this, this again is the same thing as last, where it might be closer than what the original ordinance is kind of said, but we're converting a, I think we're getting a, it's already there and we're getting a better product. So is that fair to say, Mr. Hayes? Is that, am I, would I be putting words in your mouth if I said it that way?
Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it's a legal non-conforming use. It's not going to go anywhere. And so by allowing this SGP to go forward, the community gets a better product. It's better for the community. So yes, that is correct. Because it's a legal non-conforming, it can exist in perpetuity the way it is. But by granting SGP, you're going to get something better for light pollution as well as aesthetics.
All right, thank you. And I, that legal non-conforming is the better way to say that. So thank you, Mr. Hayes. And I think we'll see some of these maybe over time, but I, I actually like this change. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Okay, thank you, anybody else from the commission wishes, any questions of applicant? Hearing none, is there anybody from the public that's filled out a card that wishes to speak? Hearing none, is there anybody on webinar, David, that's raised their hand, that wishes to speak?
Vice Chair Slasher, there are no raised hands.
Okay, nothing else from the commission? With that, I'm going to close the public forum, is there any further discussion in the commission? Hearing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve, this is Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, does it include what staff had indicated?
Yes.
Is that, this Chairman Lindblom, for clarity, was that A through H minus C, is that, is that the, is that what it is?
That's correct, everybody's nodding their heads, yes.
I'll second that.
A motion approved from Commissioner Lawrence, do I have a second?
Second?
Second from Commissioner Arnett, a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, motion is approved unanimously, are there any other announcements from staff?
No, sir.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.